Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll jump right into the, uh, into the agenda. Any questions on the agenda for next week for the board? Questions on the agenda for next week?
Uh, Brian, I just had a statement that I wanted to make. To the board and to the audience, uh, Mayor Harris, some controversy about a comment that I made this weekend on social media. I just wanted to let everybody know I realize that we as board members are held to a higher standard than the public regarding our public statements. Because of that, I have taken myself off of the negotiations committee. And I just want to apologize to the board, to, and to the district for any inconvenience this may cause them. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Could I get a motion to open to the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. I have Ron Lucchini.
Yeah, how you doing? Um, I see we have a new solicitor tonight and, um, I was wondering if I could get, when I'm done, an opinion, or at least, uh, I promise to go look at it, look into it, about an Oprah request I had made several, um, months ago. Uh, I don't know if you know, Mr. Attorney, I don't know your, your name, but, um, I don't know if you know the, the background of this district and what has been going on. And a lot of it involves, um, ethical violations, uh, that are under, uh, underway, investigations into, uh, pay-to-play type of situations with professionals, including the solicitor's position who was there before. And I felt this, uh, Oprah request was important because one of the main things that had gone on before when you weren't here was that the former president of the Board of Education, Mrs. Cozempel, decided that she was going to personally recruit and hire the super, new superintendent of schools before the old superintendent even resigned or, you know, retired. And that became a, a firestorm, so to speak. So there's all this background and it seems like some people, uh, and in fact, they're running for the Board of Education, uh, as a group this, again, this, under this, uh, it's called Children's First or something. Uh, they don't seem to think there's anything wrong with this, alright? Especially their, their leader, Mrs. Cozempel, who's behind the scenes. In any case, um, one of the things that concerned me is they, they don't understand, it seems, uh, how detrimental it is to politicize the school system. And in one case, I'm convinced, having taught in that school for, uh, a number of years, that a former principal of Orchard Valley was quote-unquote "a political hire." And of course, you can't prove it because they all lie and, and deny things. But one of the things you can do is pull their, um, applications and resumes from when they applied for the job. Now, according to Citizen's Guide to the Oprah Request, or the Citizen Guide to the Oprah Act, it says, uh, under Executive Order Number 26 McGreevy 2002, it's on page 13, alright, it's number two, it says, "The resumes and applications for employment or other information concerning job applicants, while the recruitment search is ongoing, cannot be allowed." Okay, while the recruitment search is go, ongoing. "The resumes of successful candidates may be disclosed after the search has been concluded and the position has been filled." And that's exactly what I wanted. I wanted Mrs., uh, the former principal's application and resume, because I wanted to see if there were any famous names on there that, you know, would strike a chord with somebody about, you know, being a polit, uh, political hack, so to speak, alright? And the reason why I wanted it is because I can't, for the life of me, based on this woman's performance when I was there, I can't believe she was, uh, hired for that job. And also based on my personal, private conversations with Mr. Bolendorf during a few, uh, situations, okay? And I think the woman acted highly unethical in many cases. And I wanted that information and the business administrator, who was consulting with the attorney that was in your spot, who was giving money to this, you know, Children First group, it's the last thing they are, Children First, it's politics first, was giving his interpretations of this, this law and refused to give me, well, she gave me the, the application, but everything was redacted. And I wanted to see who her references were, basically, you know, who she, who the, the school system went to for recommendations for this lady. And everything was redacted, except for maybe her name and a couple of other things. So I think the business administrator is kinda like, uh, you know, she's under a little scrutiny herself in relation to, uh, a situation with the former lawyer and the RFPs and whatever. So when you get a chance, I would like you to look into that and see if I am entitled. I think it's important now, the woman's gone. But what's really important now is that people know, if there is a name that's attached to that and people, you know, make the, the intellectual jump, so to speak, that this was a political hire, just how detrimental these politics are. And again, we have a Board of Edu- Education election coming up and the same, not the same people, but from the same group, and Mrs. Cozempel's apparently running their campaign or whatever, same group, Children's First, politicizing the school system. We can't afford to have them elected as a slate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lucchini. I failed to mention, anyone wishing to speak, we have some information cards on the desk to the left here. Uh, feel free to hand them to Stacy. Next person is Cheryl McShane.
That's okay, you guys can hear me, right? So I'm here tonight to, um, talk about the special needs sports clinic at the, the sports clinic at the Washington Dachshund High School. I know that there's like busing issues kind of in general, but we have, um, arrangements that are made for the students to do bowling once a week, um, right after school, so I'm really talking about going directly from the high school to the bowling alley. And we are, um, failing to provide transportation for those kids. So I don't know if you guys are, I don't know how, where everybody is about what has been kind of happening, but last year we had some sports clinics that were put together by some staff at the high school and we had busing for a short period of time and then the busing was taken, uh, taken away, which kinda led me to question how we had that bus initially for those first few weeks, because that doesn't seem like how transportation works. I usually goes out for a bid for a certain period of time and, you know, so forth. So why it was removed, I don't know how or what happened to begin with. But this year, our fall sports clinic for bowling has already been canceled before, didn't even start, um, because we don't have busing. So I am concerned about that because we do, and correct me if I'm wrong, provide transportation to all, to our sports teams in the high school for away games. Um, and I don't believe there's been any bus shortage for those types of events going on. So I'm concerned on why our special ed program is not having those provisions made for them. I don't want to speak for other parents, but I do feel as though that it might be, uh, like consensus says that we're just looking to get the children from the high school to the bowling alley and then it's parent pickup from the bowling alley. And that's how it worked last year for a really short period of time, so we're not even asking to get back. And I hate to have to like, kinda drive the point home, but I don't feel as though that we have general ed students, parents come into board meetings asking for these kinds of things. So I would like to ask if we can please have transportation for after-school activities. Is it even considered or on anybody's radar?
Okay.
Is that?
Are you, are you, are you finished? Okay.
Is this already like something we're looking into?
We can't go back and forth, but we'll, we'll address your, your questions.
Okay, that's fine.
Is there anything else?
No, I just wanted to see if, um, we can have that provided. And I am probably gonna follow up, if the answer is yes, how long it will take before it gets put into place. So.
Perfect, thank you.
Alright, thanks.
I don't know if anyone from the SAC committee want to respond? I don't know if you guys were aware of this or not? No? Well, if not, I'll defer to...
Yeah, I mean, you, you have my attention, so I think as early as tomorrow, I have a cabinet meeting and members of my cabinet are here. That, that particular request would get, um, high priority, okay?
Yeah, thanks for bringing it to our attention, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Um, Mr. Tom Baldacero?
Hello, everyone. It, it is a new school year, but it's kind of been a long year. Um, you know, I am going to recap some things that ha, have happened this year for a couple of reasons. Um, number one is behind me. We have, you know, a new student representative. I know you'll probably talk about that later. Uh, I've said many times that our kids are watching. And, and I expect and hope that with their peer coming on the board, that we're gonna see more of that, um, that they're gonna watch more and, and, you know, quite frankly, I've said that a lot of people up here haven't been acting like role models. And we, we have to get to that point. Uh, the, the second reason I'm gonna bring back some history is because of my mother. Lost her unexpectedly this summer. And unfortunately, one of the last conversations I had with her was about what's going on with the board. She was a forty-year resident of this district, put four kids through school, and is embarrassed by what's happened this year. And one of the last things she said to me was, "I hope you're gonna fight for what's right in this district." And she put in a text message to me, "The adults in that room are not role models for kids." So, you know, for her, for the kids in this district, for me being a fifty-two-year resident, uh, I still want and hope for better, for, not necessarily closure, but still explanation. You know, Mr. Lucchini talked about, you know, the, the slate again. Um, one of my favorite lines is, "Those who forget history are deemed to repeat it." Um, and that's what it seems like people want to do, that we want to repeat the slate stuff. It's been nasty. We've had illegal stuff happen. Uh, we have to get away from that. You know, let's focus on individuals and not groups of people who are come together, I mean, I mean, boards aren't, this, school boards aren't political, right? And that's what this is being made out to be, and that part needs to stop. You know, as, as I've said, you, you have to address everything to move forward, even if it's from, you know, the past. I've had teachers reach out in the new school year, people that have reached out to me last year and said, "Nothing's changed." The people are up there, we haven't heard why they, why it was okay, what happened. Those of you that have been here all year, you've been asked questions at times and haven't answered them. You've refused to answer. Um, I, you know, I'm just gonna recap a little bit of what we've seen. Now, Mr. Lucchini talked about what happened with the superintendent search. I don't need to go into that anymore. We've had negative comments about a political party, again. School boards aren't supposed to be political. We had a board member call my employer. Now, there, there's some misinformation out there right now that, you know, it, as a political stunt, people filed ethics violations, while I will certainly clear the, the room. I am my own person. Uh, I have one of them, it's me, I am the least political person you'll know. But there's some information out there that cases have been dismissed, it was a political stunt. Well, the political stunt is saying the cases have been dismissed. I just had a conference call with the judge and the attorney being paid for by this district. We have another call in October. Nothing will be settled before the election, so the political stunt is trying to debunk what happened and what's happening. The facts are that seven board members of the School Ethics Commission voted to send it to a judge. It's serious. She could win, she could lose, I don't know, but if it was frivolous, it would have been dismissed, and it wasn't by seven to zero. That is the fact. Any misinformation you hear out there that something was canceled, not true. And it's a shame that the lies that people are telling, that people on this board are associated with, the lies that are still out there, that's what you're associating yourself with. And that is not what our kids deserve, okay? It's not even close to what they deserve. We've seen illegal campaign donations, we've seen improper filings or no filings of required things related to donations. Uh, there's an investigation that you guys are paying for as to what happened with the RFP. All of this and unanswered questions, people not taking accountability. I'm very disappointed in, in what happened with Mr. La Liberty, uh, but I do appreciate the transparency and the honesty and, and doing the right thing. Quite frankly, you know, it, it shouldn't have happened and you did the right thing and, you know, I, I do appreciate that. And I, I think we need more of that. Um, you know, so I have questions that were asked before and I'll try and, I'll try them again, and maybe a couple new ones. When it was identified that a former board member tried to get their super candidate in, I mentioned the negative impact this could have on internal candidates. Did anybody here speak to those candidates to, to either prove my point that there was damage done? Or maybe they said it wasn't a big deal, but, you know, I don't have access to those people you do. And I would ask if, if you've spoken to them, because that's the right thing to do. Just two more, one, I got two more questions. To the seated board members here at the beginning of the year, you know, were you aware of this plan for the superintendent? No one has ever answered that question. It's been out there, I've heard it from other districts. I would like to know from each person here whether or not you knew about it. And the last thing was about the illegal donations. You know, you, those that took them said they weren't aware of it and, you know, okay. Uh, but did you ever ask where the money came from that was going for all those signs? Did you take ownership of running for the board, or were you just being told what to do? Because that's what it feels like what's happening again. We have to say no to a slate because the slate's just telling people what to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baldacero. Uh, condolences to you and your family for your loss. Uh, what I'll address is the, uh, the superintendent search with the, uh, the HYA. Uh, as a matter of fact, we're going to ask Mr. Bill Adams to join us next week. Uh, he can address some of those concerns as regarding, um, you know, applicants for this open position. Um, I can tell you that we do have a slate of applicants, uh, some returning from the previous search, the failed search, and some new applicants as well. Um, I don't know if anyone else wants to address any other, uh, questions. Mr. Baldacero had? Alright, thank you. Uh, Carol Chilla?
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, just to piggyback real quick on Tom's questions, I believe they weren't rhetorical. So I think he was looking for an answer. Um, I wanted to talk to you tonight about, um, and I came up here before, about vacancies and interims. So I have some questions embedded. I'm happy to repeat them after I'm done. We have a post for the high school principal position. Um, I have it right here. The former principal resigned, I believe, or gave notice July twenty-third, and we have a posting date of September fourteenth. I have to understand why it took us two months to post this important position. That's my first question. I'm gonna answer it myself and hope that this is not the response, but please do not say that we're waiting for the next permanent superintendent to hire for that position. Because last I checked, we're not close. I know we're in the process, I know you guys are doing a great job in terms of due diligence, which is amazing. I, and I cannot understand why you would wait that long and put our kids in this position. I'm thrilled that we have an interim there. She's leaving December first. So we have approximately ten weeks to fill the position. So what's the interim plan if we don't find the candidate that we want? You know, we have several teachers and supervisors, administration, doing double duty. And I'm gonna catch that by saying they're, um, I'm gonna say bordering superheroes, right? So they go into a closet, they come out, they're supervisors. And then next period, they're teaching a class, right? So they're kind of, you know, we should be providing heelies or roller skates, because that's what they're doing all over the building. I have looked now the past few meetings to look for what they're being paid and compensated for, for what they're doing. And what I mean by that is that if we have a, I'll give you an example, because there's plenty throughout the district. If we have a supervisor that's teaching a class but also supervising, what are we doing? Are we compensating them? Because I don't see anything on human resources or finance to approve that. I don't see it. I hope that it's gonna maybe be an addendum on the next meeting, but I don't see it. So I'd like to know why I haven't seen that yet. Um, please don't tell me that our plan is that out of the good graces of their heart, we're asking them to do two positions. Because that's a cultural thing. It's not good for our district to put our teachers, our administration, doing two different jobs. Because guess what happens? Both jobs are strained and they're doing the best that they can. I need to better understand why I haven't seen that yet. And I hope the answer is that we're not compensating them. Because somewhere in this is breakage, right? I mean, if we're not paying a sub, if we're not paying, um, a permanent replacement, then somewhere in there, that money's there. So I just need to know either where is that money going, or what is the plan to compensate these professionals appropriately? I'm seeing a lot, um, in the public, I'm hearing a lot. I, I just want to clarify, and I know, I don't know how much training you all have had, there's been a lot of reappointments to the board. As board members, you're all responsible for the why. The why things happens in the, in the district. You work by committee. You question why. You don't give the how. And I feel like the past few meetings, what I've noticed is that everyone wants to give the how. And that's just not the role. The only role, the only person that you're in charge of hiring is an interim superintendent and a superintendent. And I think we have a fantastic interim superintendent that I think we're lucky to have. Very capable of running the district. I just want to implore and ask you, allow that to happen, because I feel what's happening is there, dare I say, a bit of micromanagement? That, you know, it happens when there's so many changes and you feel like you just want to fix everything. We're not at that point. This district is so volatile and unstable, and I think that Mr. McGee is doing a great job and the cabinet in trying to stabilize it. Now is not the time to look at every dollar to figure out where we can save it, where we, we can restructure. Can we just let everything calm down? Let's get a permanent solution in place with the superintendent and then in the coming years, think about what we can do. But to do it all now, not appropriate. Do I need to repeat my questions, or do you have them all? Because I would like answers.
I can address, um, you know, I guess your initial question regarding the, uh, the delay with the principal.
Okay.
You know, I, I think, um, you know, I think, and I'll speak for the board and you guys could feel free to chime in. We wanted to ensure that, um, there was complete transparency and the, um, you know, recruitment and, and the potential hiring of any new principal. Um, so I think that's probably caused the, uh, the two-week delay that you, that you referenced, um, but...
Two, two months.
Two months, but we all have agreed and, and we, we do agree with you. We need to, uh, go ahead and, uh, post the position like we did. And, uh, the other thing, though, you know, I don't think it's something we should rush. You know, obviously, it's, uh, it's out there now, it's public. And, uh, you know, we hope we make a good, you know, selection as a, as a district. And I think we're all in agreement of that, but, you know, we know we have the, um, the current interim principal with the December, uh, you know, deadline as far as her, uh, you know, service in the district. But having said that, um, you know, I think for us, it's incumbent that we make the right hire, not, not to rush to hire. I think you referenced ten weeks. And, um, you know, I don't think we should be, um, you know, limit ourselves to timelines on something like this. Um, but I do think we're gonna make the good, uh, right, the good hire, a right hire for the principal of the high school, which is very important. Um, some of the other questions, I don't know if anybody else would like to chime in, um...
I do agree with, as far as, um, the supervisors doing double duty. I mean, especially at this, it's always hard, especially at this time of the year. Um, what happens at the opening of school is really monumental. It's really, really difficult, so I agree with you there. Um, and we've also, I've also spoke to the fact that as a board member, as a board, we don't manage the day-to-day activities of a school district, of district employees, and our job is to hire the superintendent. And that's what we do, because I think it is easy sometimes to, not you as an A in particular, or me, just, it's hard to, easy to get wrapped up into trying to solve all the minor details within a building, and it's not our job. It's just, and I think I've said that's not our job, we have to be careful. That's not how we act, so I do agree with you, with you there as well.
Sure.
Um, truth.
Go ahead, please.
We have talked about, um, compensating. Um, I don't, I'm not on the budget committee, but I know that we have talked about it. I don't know what's happening in budget about that. But we have discussed, um, compensating the administrators that are doing double duty. That has been in discussion. I'm not sure what happened in, in budget.
Carol, I can, I can speak to history. We've had supervisors through the years, um, cover classes during periods of transition. Someone goes out on a maternity, someone is sick, someone, we, we, is hired, we lose them to another district, we lose them to a promotion. Um, and we're doing that now. And we have not compensated, the answer is, you, I know you don't want to hear the answer, the answer is we've not compensated folks for doing those double duties, holding the fort down in a teaching mode while they're also doing their supervisory duties. And I think it's part of the thinking where it would probably have to be negotiated, I think, in terms of that process. We've not done that before, we've not done that before, and we, we are starting a year of not having done that again. Just in terms of our history, we've never done that.
Just a few more questions that I had. I'm not doing a back and forth, I just want to make sure they're answered. So the plan for when the current interim principal leaves December first? Because I believe, from what I understand, it's firm, right? We can't keep her, not a day more. What's the plan? To your point, Dr. Ellis, right?
It's, it's, it's a work in progress. You know, I think it's, uh, as far as a plan, you know, if we have a principal that we can appoint by then, I'm sure we will. Um, if not, you know, we'll have to go to Plan B and, and figure it out. You know, as far as if it's another interim or an extension, you know, I, I don't know. It's a plan, it's a work in progress.
Yeah. You know, as your interim superintendent, would I want to have, um, a strong candidate to take over that building? Absolutely. And I think... Absolutely. And I think you would want that from me, and you would want that from, you know, from our collective wisdom relative to the folks that would be involved in that process and our board's approval of that. So, but yes, is Roe-Farrow done on December 1? Yes. It is, that is, that is the timeline. Yes, there will be, you know, it would be impossible in a sense for her to continue. So.
All right. I'll come up the next section for the rest. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Could I get a motion to close the public?
Salute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. At this time, we'll look at committee reports. We'll start with negotiations and personnel.
Well, I really didn't have anything for, I really didn't have anything for negotiation. Just have a comment. And this is just the record to other WTSSPA. Let me just say, this is not at all what I envisioned with negotiating a contract. My expectations were that we would be settled right now or at least three quarters of the way there. For those who have said we have canceled every meeting and we have been putting you off, that is not true. So, you know, sometimes you have to play the hand you don't, and that's what we're dealing with. So I hope this squashes any of the negative chatter going around, social media and elsewhere. I see you as worker bees of the district. And we really appreciate all the hard work that you're doing for the district and that you care about our students. And we are doing our best at working as fast as we can to get more dates on the calendar. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Sac Committee?
Okay. That's me again. So in our meeting, we discussed the coverage at the high school that Mr. Zakowski and Mr. Corgley, pardon, forgive me if I'm pronouncing it wrong, have been filling both administratively and teaching vacancies at the high school. We also discussed the parent university, and Mrs. Baker explained that the West Windsor has a parent university that provides parents with information via webinars about different initiatives and aspects of the districts. Mr. McGee offered to research it and get back to us. The new grading system. Mr. McGee explained that we are pausing the new grading system, and we will plan to implement it, the new grading system, at the high school in the following year. We also discussed a revision of board policy, P2425, the Emergency Virtual and Remote Instruction Program. It's a mandated policy and regulations that must be developed and board approved. And I think that's it.
All right, thank you, Renee. I'll report out on me.
Anything else? Just talk a little bit?
Sure.
Yeah, I'd just like to talk a little bit more about that parent university. Actually, that's one of the five categories in our strategic plan that talks about community engagement. A parent community, I mean, a parent university, and I believe Mrs. Carey and Dr. Alexander are going to be looking into it with West Windsor. Basically, what happens is our parents could register for a webinar, and we could articulate to our parents about different kinds of things that are happening in the district, like the grading policies, standard-based grading, what safety issues we're implementing, maybe something related to the health curriculum. So, and that would be taped, so then people could go back and look at it. I think what we're trying to do basically is trying to engage the community and get them involved. And we have found, just looking at our board meetings, we have anywhere between 5,000 and 1,000 people tuning in. It's very difficult for parents to come out and then come to a school and listen to a presentation. So we really want to kind of step it up with our technology, and that's moving in that direction. Another thing that was brought up, was brought up in two committees. I'm happy to say, with our superintendent, Mr. McGee, we are going to kick off some town halls. And we're going to be targeting our teachers, our support staff, and our community. So that is going to be implemented, and that is going to be done. And I'm really excited about that. So that again falls under our community engagement. Two big initiatives to get information from our community and our stakeholders and our people that work with us. So I just wanted to expand on that. Thank you.
Thanks, Connie. Any other questions or comments?
I just want to add, in looking at that parent university, there was also a section on there for students to go to for information that would help them with health, with safety. And I thought that was really a good point there. There was something for the students to go to also.
Section for that.
Anyone else? All right, we're moving on to the Business Committee, and I'll report out. We met on Tuesday, September 13th. Initially, there was a budget process overview. Janine gave the committee an overview of the budget process and the timeline. Prior year budget goals, prior year budget goals were shared with the committee. New goals will be developed next month. We also talked about some cost-saving ideas from the Board of Education members. We created a shared document containing all of these cost-saving ideas from the board members. That is going to be developed and shared. The Business Committee and the admin will review and utilize for budget planning moving forward. As far as the finance agenda, the finance agenda for next week's meeting was reviewed. Upcoming purchasing items. Purchasing items that will appear on the agenda this month were reviewed with committee. We also talked about the sound system in the boardroom. I know that's been a topic for a few weeks now. The initial quote was shared with the committee. We'll work to get other options and getting a more detailed quote so we can come up with an affordable plan. We talked a little bit about frontager at Central. The calls for new workstations was shared along with the conditions of the frontager that is being replaced. Under the superintendent discussion items, and again, this speaks to Carol's discussion about the job posting, we talked about the job posting process. A list of all places, job postings were shared. A discussion took place to generate more ideas regarding future job postings for the district. And finally, we had an organizational chart shared with FTEs, which is basically the number of staff in each category. A document was created in 2021 to include this information, and we will be updating this for use during the budget process that's upcoming. So that's the report out from the Business Committee. Any additional comments or questions?
Can I get last, for reference to the list from last year? Is that the list that Dr. Alexander got us? Or was the hires for the budget?
That was the, that was the list that was shared via email of places where, when it goes to the newspaper, it goes to other. And then we're developing a comprehensive list of other, you know, universities and other places that jobs are posted, so we can share that as well.
So the one we're expanding on?
Yeah.
Okay, the next committee would be Instructional, Instruction and Curriculum Committee?
Instructional instruction.
Instructional phrase, exactly.
I want to thank all the teachers and the parents for a good start of the year. It's always hectic and insane for the staff, administrators, parents, and the kids, you know, they came out this summer and get back into the grind. I thought, I went to two back-to-school nights, thought they all were done really well. I was amazed, I mean, I'd been in the high school before, I have done tours in the high school before, but following Andrew's schedule with his probably 60-pound backpack, because he refused to use his locker, is a feat that I can't imagine. So congratulations to any freshmen out there trying to navigate that, because it was, it's a lot. But I thought that all the teachers did a great job. So far, so good. There were some, we did have some conversation regarding the grading. Dr. Gregor is probably sick of talking to me that one weekend. He'll never get that time back. I apologize. But I think we kind of came to conclusion. There was some grading inconsistencies across back-to-school nights amongst middle schools, which is, inconsistencies across middle schools is a pet peeve of mine anyway, but I believe that the grading has been resolved and everything should be the same across the middle schools, subject-specific. So that's good. We did talk a little bit about grading, and some of the board still feels there should be more of a hybrid regarding standard-based grading and number or letter grade, so I think that's still up for discussion as well. So back to the actual agenda. So Gretchen and Jack discussed a safe reopening plan. The protocols are in place, and they were submitted. It was sent to the county executive superintendent to be approved, and it's done every year, and we did a really nice job last year, I believe was reported. So the field trip list is up for approval, and as needed, different trips will be added. Ms. Grimaldi discussed a proposal for improvement with Camden County College Dual Credit Agreement. It was explained that we get money back after a certain amount of students sign up. And when we get the money back this year, we'd like to use it to support our students who are less advantaged or are free and reduced lunch kids with benefits. So it would be a win across for everybody, which is great. We also talked about making sure parents know that we have this dual credit agreement. And, you know, apparently there are emails and blasts, and we just want to make sure it gets out there that this opportunity is there. I sure hope to take advantage of that as my boys get older, but we want to make sure that it's known. The course of study manual will be up for approval, where every subject is listed by grade, as well as D, it's written in the revision. This summer, several will be reviewed. There was a slight change in middle school for social studies that there has to be some civics education. It's the Laura Wooten Act. Luckily, our middle school is already covering this requirement with their curriculum, but they're ensuring that that's happening. And all of our courses of studies are on the website by elementary, middle, and high school. We have the Health and Phys Ed workshop, I guess you'd say, on the 29th at 6 o'clock. Is that the high school? Right? The high school. They discussed, the cabinet had a meeting with our new law group, and it was really productive and a good meeting, so we want to report out on that. Our agreement with Monroe Township, we have a shared service for a CPIS, which is a Community Parental Involvement Specialist, which is a required position for preschool funding, and we're sharing that position with them. And that contract was signed. Our Department of Education model, which is Marzano, has to be approved, and our student, I'm blanking, SGP's, I'm so used to acronyms. What's the word? Student growth?
Student growth objective or student growth trajectory? I use student growth objective.
Okay, so SGOs, SGP's.
CIO.
The ways our student progress is measured, put it that way. And we had to put, I even hate to say this, Emergency Remote Plan, in case of any health-related emergency, there has to be one out there. It's going to be on the website where our parents can comment. Has to be updated annually. I'm almost done. We're going to be applying for a bilingual ELL waiver. When a district has more than 20 students, they have to offer a bilingual program or apply for a waiver to do a sheltered English instruction. It's not logistically practical to have multiple bilingual programs in each school, so we provide a sheltered English instruction. And we do a really nice job, make sure all of our staff are prepared to teach that kind of program. There is a slight change with coming up regarding HIB procedures currently or in the past. I'm not sure if this has actually passed yet. If anything is mentioned, a HIB has to be enacted on immediately. There's a 24-hour period, there's no if, ands, or buts. Now, this new policy allows for some triage where the administrator can figure out if it's a conflict or if it's a HIB, which aligns with the state policy, which I think will enable us to move forward and not be working on the things that need to be worked on, not something that's a conflict. At O'Phu Middle School, our club members are going to adorn the school with a mosaic tree and a sculpture in the courtyard, modify the main hallway, they're going to have a visiting artist come in and create a mural. We had a lot of discussion regarding hiring practices, both in the business and in the Instructional Affairs Committee. And we're going to, you know, we're making sure we have new resources to ensure that everything's being done to find staff to meet all of our kids' needs. And Connie had sent a website to another district in regards to some information for standards-based grading. We do have information under parent resources on our website, so there is a lot of information already out there. And I think that's it. Any questions?
Questions, comments from the board? Anyone? And lastly, just a quick update on the superintendent's search. I'm sure there'll be some discussion around here. We had conversations online this week with Bill Adams, who's the lead consultant for, has a young antia regarding moving forward with the process. What I can tell you guys is that we, they're ready to launch the survey, the stakeholder survey, that was shared with the, with the board. I know there were some questions regarding some of the content on the survey that we can discuss now if you would like. Keep in mind, though, you know, when I did talk to Bill, you know, this was one way to receive input from all stakeholders. But we need to remember that on this community forum set up for Monday, October 17th, which is going to be virtual, and Thursday, October 20th, which is going to be in-person. So even though we have these intake items from the survey that's going to launch on, I think, October 3rd, there'll be other opportunities for the community to engage. So I did want us to keep that in mind as well. But I know there were some questions or concerns about some of the questions on the survey. So I don't know if you guys want to discuss that now or how we move forward.
Yeah, I'll start. I thought there were some good questions on the survey upfront that talk about people's perception of the district, you know, and certain things, which is great information for us as a board, and I think for the district, so we can get an idea of the perception of how people think we're doing. My question, and that part was great. And then there was one question about what are the characteristics you're looking for in a superintendent? So I think we need more than one question about what we're looking for in the superintendent. I thought the questions about the district, the state of the district, could be streamlined a bit, because one of the things you got to worry about is survey fatigue, right? The people take a survey, they go 15 questions through what's going on in the district, and they never even get to the question about the superintendent. So I think it needs to be revisited. I thought Connie sent a pretty good example of one she's seen before, which I thought was a lot better. And I don't know, hopefully that's something we can revisit before we launch it to the public.
Yeah, I'd just like to jump in. I think I shared with everybody the Martin School District from Michigan and their survey. And you could weigh in. I kind of liked the questions they have regarding the superintendent, what you're looking for in a superintendent. You know, my feeling was that we said to the community, we're really going to want to get your input on what you're looking for in a superintendent. And I think somehow we should, we should be a little clearer in that regard. I know we're going to have a, we're going to have an in-person, you know, a town hall, I guess for lack of a better word, and something that would be, you know, virtual. But I think the data, we need some data that specifically lets us know what people are looking for in a superintendent. Now, the problem, as I understand it, is that if we start to customize it, there's an additional cost. So I think that's something we have to talk about. I just think if we're going to do a survey, we've got to make sure it reflects what all of us are looking to put in the survey. We've got to deal with that.
Yeah, I think the point you made regarding that is important. Typically, when they do these types of survey, and this, again, is just based on like my limited research and being able to, talking with Bill, they like to map the input to like national standards. So I think that helps drive next steps for them as an organization. But having said that, you know, I will ask Bill to come and join us at next week's board meeting. Hopefully, he's available to probably address some of these questions. We also need to consider, you talked about the cost associated with an additional survey. We need to think about timing as well. You know, how long would something like that take to pull together? That's something we need to consider as well. But I'm sure Bill, next week, can address some of these in detail.
And I think the way the survey was designed, it spoke to a lot of what you feel the district needs, or where the weaknesses are. And then I think the way they would look at, if there are weaknesses here, then we need a strength in the superintendent. So I think that's where, that's where I think, that's how it was probably designed.
I also like the survey that Connie had sent us. I like the fact that there were, people don't like to write lengthy things when they're doing a survey. I like the fact that we just like the different things.
The radio buttons?
Yeah, that you could check to see, you know, whether you strongly agreed, or, you know, if this was a characteristic that you wanted for the superintendent. I thought that was very important.
And I thought to get rid of the neutral is always a good idea.
And I thought to get rid of the neutral is always a good idea because that gives you no information whatsoever.
Right.
Like a middle, like it doesn't tell you anything.
And that's often the easy one, like if you're not sure, you, oh, I'll just hit neutral
or I don't know or average. I think if we get rid of that middle, you automatically are forced to answer one way or the other, which gives us a little more information.
All right, so let's, I'll invite him to join us next week. We can, you know, have some of these questions answered and kind of move forward. All right? So that's the update on the superintendent search. Any other questions or comments?
Brian, I can give an update on the investigation if you want, when you want it.
Do you want to do that under maybe old business?
Okay.
And that's actually where we are, so.
Look at that timing.
Any old business from the board? Connie?
Okay, I have an update on the investigation. I think I reported out that the hope was to try to have it finished by the end of September. Right now, we have, there are three more interviews that have to be done and then it will be wrapped up. So probably, I don't have a hard, firm date, but probably looking within the next two to three weeks, we'll have a report. So we're moving along and I think it's actually moving faster than maybe we even thought, right? I mean, in terms of, in terms of this process. So that being said, I also have another thing to bring up in old business. We have been, and I like to make a motion and have some discussion, I'd like to make a motion that the board, the board consider a committee of administration and board members to look at our recruitment process. Again, with our strategic plan, one of the categories was personnel and a recruitment committee. And I remember when I got on the board, I asked Mr. Bolendorf, who's on the recruitment committee? And he said, well, what are you talking about? And I said, well, it's in the strategic plan. So, you know, we don't, we don't, I don't think we really have a recruitment committee. So what I'd like to do is make a motion that we establish a committee, board members and administration, because I think we have, we have seen that we really need to take a look at our reach for recruitment and how we do it. Things are getting tighter in terms of getting people to apply to our district and we need to take a, really take a good look at this. And maybe collectively between the board and the administration, we can have that. So the motion is, I make a motion that we have a committee, administrators and members of the board, not the full board, but members of the board, establish a recruitment committee.
Connie, if I could just chime in real quickly. Sorry about that. Just to chime in real quickly, it might make sense for me to get an idea and understanding as to what this committee would look like, what they would do, just to make sure there's no ethical concerns before the board votes on that. I would say, obviously, this is the first I've heard of it, if maybe you and I could talk later, you could give me a better understanding as to what the goal and what the purpose of, particularly the roles of the board members would be before we go further with that.
Okay.
Perfect. Thanks Connie. Any other old business from the board? All right, hearing none, moving on. Could I get a motion, what report of superintendent, all right? Could I, could I get a motion for the vote on the report of the superintendent?
Still moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call. Report of superintendent, item one, roll call.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Buery?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Galanero?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes. Motion passed. Could I get a motion for instruction and curriculum, item one?
Still moved. Second.
Any questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Buery?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Galanero?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes. Motion passed. Could I get a motion for policy, first reading, items one through four?
Still moved.
I have second?
Second.
Any questions? Roll call?
No, wait, wait, wait.
Nope.
This is CC, all right, CC four. I had a question on the HIB policy and I know, Dr. Alexander, you sent me some information on that. It was a lot of information. I didn't get a chance to fully read through it all yet, so I will admit that. The one question I had on that was, there was a lot of changes where things were deleted and then things were added. In my reading of it, it was a little bit confusing because in one, you pointed out to me, when I first read it, I thought we were missing where the consequences of somebody doing a HIB, right? Like there's a section later on down where it talks about the restorative type behaviors for it. And then up, like in the other section of six, it talks about the consequences could include like suspension, expulsion, et cetera. I would just, maybe I got to read it again. Like to me, it would be clearer if those things were together in both places or at least referenced one another. And I'll read it again for clarity on that, but when I read it, I was like, oh, this isn't here. And then you're like, no, it is. It's just in multiple places.
So to help delineate that, really understanding that code of conduct violations are different than HIB infractions, excuse me, allergies, I don't have COVID. But really making sure that we understand that there are two separate items and the policy allows it to outline it, understanding that more than likely, or 99% of the time, the infraction of the code of conduct is handled well ahead of the HIB violation. And the HIB violation is really restoring relationships. How are we re-entering into the community? How do we modify and change the behavior so it doesn't occur again? So it is the later part of it and so the policy is very extensive and long. But page six talks about the consequences, the violations of the code of conduct and what that means. And then it goes into the HIB infractions and the remediation for student supports. So it does kind of follow what happens for students in that process. So as a principal may assist and say, listen, it's the code of conduct and it happens immediately. It does take some time for the HIB to occur and then that's how that process lays out. So it is very comprehensive in language. It is a recommendation from our stress esme, who does our policies and supports that, very similar to lots of other districts. But if you read through it and have some more conversation, I'd be happy to dig through that and look at the amendments of your suggestions.
I also have a question. I'm assuming that the consequences have to do with age appropriate also?
And it says that in there as well. They give the rationale for consequences and what that may mean. And again, it aligns with our code of conduct as appropriate. Last meeting, Ms. Gerber shared about the developmental supports that would be needed in our primary and in our elementary levels versus our high school level. So it is responsive to that.
Thank you.
Oh, here, I just have one quick question. Where does our policy align with our state standards, with those state standards?
With regards to harassment, intimidation, and bullying?
Yeah.
When you say, where does it align, meaning, are we responsive to all the amendments and all the recommendations as per the state?
Yes.
Yes. Mimics it, well, if approved for the second reading, then we will mimic exactly what the state has recommended, as well as we are doing a little bit, I guess above and beyond, as the next meeting, you will have updates from a deeper dive of what our HIB reports are, the why, the how, some more data digs, so that you have that content, as well as how that impacts our climate and culture. That is not deemed for our state regulations, but that's something we think is important for township.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Galanero?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Buery?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes.
Motion passed. Could I get a motion to approve policy, second readings, items one through 12?
Questions?
Do the motion first.
Oh, motions, okay. Still moved.
Second.
Any questions?
On DD five and six, the two codes of conduct, I think we talked about them in first reading last time. Did they go to committee? I know Scott had the suggestion around parent contact happening sooner, and I thought that there may be some places where we could introduce counseling sooner. I didn't hear that. I thought it maybe was going to go to instructional, I don't, I didn't hear that in your report.
Nope. Didn't call that.
But you did mention that.
There you go. Yeah, there were no.
Yeah, and there weren't any changes made from our first reading, even though we did talk about more parent contact and more counseling.
I think, I think we talked about like going to committee to talk more about it, but I don't know, like do we not approve this and take it to committee or what the procedure would be? Yeah.
Scott, I mean, you could consider approving it and then, you know, you go back into committee and then if you needed to approve something again, we've done that, where we've moved a policy along, if that's your, if you so desire. Or, Dr. Gregor, Gretchen, we're okay, in terms of what we were previously.
I think I had responded in an email that there was a minor change from the code of conduct that we had put in place a long time ago. So we, teachers are always contacting parents. When it gets to the principal, they'll always be speaking for elementary. A lot of the infraction, sure, parents are contacting, but you know, the arena of kids that may be on the sidelines, not everybody's fault that day, because I'm looking to get here and confirming, but not everybody's fault that day, because you know, they're not necessarily involved, but they may have been a part of that. So that's where, when it gets to the administrative level, we have some leeway in terms of where we're going to go with them. It's a guidebook for the administrative, particularly at elementary, because you know, we're looking at kindergarten with youth. Children are aging, you know, ages five to 10. We're really looking at really teaching them behaviors that should be enacted, but then also, as they get a little older and we start to see repeat offenders, then really looking at, you know, creating those consequences and work in practices first. So we had not gone back, as one person had suggested, to revise that section because we had one minor revision that we worked deeply with with the WTBA and were leaning over the summer to define it to that point where it was. And that's what we did.
Yeah, I don't think the question was about the elementary code of conduct. I think the question that we had basically was about the high school, middle school code of conduct.
Okay, forgive me, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, yeah, that there should be a little bit more parent involvement as far as that goes.
It's like the middle school, the first line of defense are the SLC leaders, the student learning community leaders, so they're two per grade level. And they handle low-level discipline, they make contacts, the teachers themselves do the contact. By the time it gets to an administrator, we're now likely talking about something they have to document, what's called a letter of discipline, which you see on the board meetings. Normally, that's called a prevention. That is a parent contact. And then the parent can come back and say, oh, I have questions about this, or I don't think that's appropriate, you know, reaction to what was done. Excuse me, at the high school level, a lot of the changes we actually put in there with our contact, where it wasn't modified in the beginning, for all law enforcement, it doesn't mean that it wasn't happening, but we decided that we would put it in at least at the second offense. The first offense usually is no discipline, it's just a documented, you know, give the student a little leeway, a little chance to change the behavior or explain why something is happening to them and why they might have been issued. The other changes were recommended by law enforcement, the WTBA. Contacted the SROs, the SRO's, which is administration, and all of those underlined bold, dark font, were additions made based on the WTBA.
Scott, Elaine, in the end, you know, the board, you know, approves and sets policy. We have another meeting next week, so if there's more back and forth or more recommendations or a dialogue that you wanted to have, we have another week for that ability of your insights to be articulated.
Yeah, I don't know how everybody else feels. I just think it's such an important, I don't know if this is working or not, I think it's just, it's such an important topic and especially with the data. And I know the data skewed of, we had COVID, we had a pandemic, but the data, right, showed an increase in the number of disciplinary items that we're seeing. So it just feels like an area we should look more closely at and I don't want to like, and I realize it was, some of the changes were minute, but.
The why, Scott?
Yeah, the why, right? The why of, why wouldn't we involve, yeah, it's, so I'd like to understand the why and what maybe, you know, why it's going up and what could be done potentially to reduce that.
Dr. Alexander, when we were in equity, we spent time looking at the different infractions and trying to pick them apart. And I know we could only really go so far because we were committee and we, you know, we only have the information that we're privy to as community members and everything. I think that when we're talking about the code of conduct, we have to look at that also because I worry about things like those low-level offenses that may not really be big deals. Like I'm just, I'm going to go out on a limb, a topic that gets a lot of people one way or another, is the dress code. Like that isn't up there with something like one child punching another child. But are we spending too much time working on certain areas that are really inconsequential when you depend on the other areas that really give you the meat of the information? I just, I don't think we should worry about stuff like crop tops as much as we're worrying about things like the slurs that kids use against other kids. So I think we have to really be able, have somebody pull apart that data, figure out if there are some areas that we need to target before we look at the code of conduct and start to vote on any changes, especially that middle school and high school level.
Just have one more question. I guess, is there anything in those changes that we legally need to make so that we're not out of compliance with state requirements or anything like that?
Well, the ones that could be adjusted to the school is screens or, it's not a particular one. They're primarily in tiered, in tiered, or in fact, tell them as long as your board packages are legal.
Okay. Is there something where we could approve this and then take a deeper dive into it just to understand?
I think that's what Jack said.
And then we could always modify it later, right?
Yeah, I mean.
You're absolutely at your liberty. I mean, your decision, based on your concern, level of concern, is that you could, and I'm not telling you what to do, I'm just answering the question. If you wanted to do that, can a policy be reviewed again in a given year? Sure can.
I think we just need to make sure we do it. Like it needs to be on the table to make sure it's done. And it's too easy to accidentally.
Maybe have a document that you have.
Put it on hold until we have it right.
So we're talking about what items five and six, all right? So do we just amend and just a motion to approve one through four and then?
Yeah, my only concern was, I don't want to have us out of compliance, right? There's changes in there that we need legally and we delay it and we're continuing.
Let me clarify a little bit. Not all of the ones that have charters will be filed, it's the same chart as the major file. So this is law enforcement's recommendation, they want to document these infractions and have an incident report, or that they're consulting charges or not, where this position is a rock that can be put away. But they want to move on this and support their SROs. So that's a rule of the system. So my worry is, like, when it's on hold, because people are operating on a hold for time.
That's fair.
So Scott, what I'm hearing from Dr. Gregor is with the law enforcement, if you approve it tonight, then you solidify the law enforcement's recommendations that are absolute and are in play between now and the next revision, then you could feel good about that. Could you then go back and make some finessing of some of the things you talk about relative to contact? You can.
Let's do that.
So, I don't know, that kind of.
If we approve it, can we just make sure it comes back on the next agenda? Those items come back?
Sure, yeah. And I think there's time in a week, if there's any finessing, that you, between Dr. Gregor and maybe a Scott and or Elaine can have that dialogue. Yeah.
It would probably go to committee. It would go to committee first, right?
Right. That's what was supposed to happen, it was supposed to go to committee.
All right.
All right.
And I think just to, I mean, we focus a lot on the parent contact, but I think there is a place for counseling. So I know it's probably gonna go to instructional affairs, but I think I could probably weigh in and offer some...
It fits everywhere.
It fits everywhere, though, because it's so encompassing. Maybe we take it to instructional affairs and SAC? Yeah, every, not, not budget, but the other two, yeah, I think so.
And my, my thought is, knowing the length of time that something this could take, is if you mark, you know, you, between now and the next committee meetings, you mark up places specifically where those things are, it'll be far easier for people like Dr. Gregor or others to then move on whether or not that's something that would be in terms of parent contact. But I think what Dr. Gregor's recommending is in terms of the urgency to get this approved relative to the law enforcement's. And in particular, we probably, he's recommending we don't wait for that, because then you, then you'd feel good about, you would solidify our law enforcement's recommendations tonight.
And I wanted to add a second, yes, most of these that don't say that require it's understood because a letter has to go home. So they're going to only act if you have contact, and I would consider that a phone call would probably happen as well. So, uh, it was only inserted where it was not absolutely required that a letter to home, recording a parent vote was going on.
All right, well, let's agree to get this on SAC and instruction for the next committee meetings. All right?
And make sure we do, and I think it's a good reminder, like, to make sure we stick to the stuff that we need to talk about and not get thrown off onto things that are necessarily under our priority, to stick to that.
I think an issue with the elementary school one, now, because of the age of the students. But we could look at it, so.
I think it'd just be good to look at it, because some of it just is, could be, we need to understand it better, right? Like, Dr. Gregor points some things out, and I think if we understand the why and everything else.
All right, we'll, we'll do both. I think we are roll call.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Galanero?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Burey?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes. A motion passed. Could I get a motion to approve of student activities, service, item one?
Second.
Any questions? Aaron Dunn, roll call.
Mrs. Galanero?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Burey?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes. Motion passed. Could I get a motion to approve human resources, items one through 55?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
Yeah, I just have a question, uh, which number is the appointment for the German teacher?
Thirty-two, thirty-two.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Burey?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Galanero?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes. Uh, motion approved. And could I get a motion to approve, uh, finance facilities, item one?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Burey?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Galanero?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes. Motion approved. Any new business from the board? I'd like to take the, uh, the opportunity to congratulate, uh, Angelina Chilla. She was selected... Angelina was selected by her peers to be the, um, student rep for the board. So again, congratulations, and we'll have you all set up next week to join us. All right?
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Any other new items from the board? Could I get a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Mr. Lucarini?
Yeah, hi, a couple things here, sort of relate. Uh, Tom's, uh, comments about the state of the district, the history. I think that history, and I made a few statements, has put a cloud over this board education, all right? And the people, and the administration as well. And as a result of that, I think there's a problem with trust. And I think it's ridiculous to worry about the perception of the district by people in the community as opposed to the reality of the district, okay? The reality of the district, once that situation occurred with the lawyer giving money to candidates, some of whom still sitting here. Uh, Mrs. Cozempel, president of the board, then followed by the other guy, for then, Denovee, who's, uh, relative has a, over a million dollar contract with the school system. There's a cloud over this, this, this district. And that is, that's the reality, that's the reality. There are people here who I'd like to trust, who I'd like to believe in. But if you told me anything, I, I, I wouldn't accept it, uh, on face value. And as a result, I have to disagree with Mrs. Chilla and others who think that we should fill these positions for principal, for our super, uh, for principals of these different, uh, schools before you pick a superintendent. And before we pick a superintendent, the first thing this community has to do is pick a school board. And this election coming up is the most important thing. Because the copy James Carver, a little twist on his, you know, it's the economy stupid, it's the slate stupid. Okay, these people who get paid by other professionals who are connected to a political party. And it has happened time and time again, both Republican and Democrats are guilty of this sin, by the way. It just happens to be Democrats this time around, okay? When you are connected to the point where you're taking money for signs and whatever, uh, mailings, you cease to have the children first, it becomes the political party first. And I know how they work, trust me, I, I've seen it. And, and that's the problem, you know? Before you hire a superintendent, you gotta make, we, we, the community, have to make sure that we have bodies up on the board, at least five, at least five, that are gonna make decisions, maybe that we won't agree with all the time. But we, we know that they're making the decision based on the interest of the district and not, uh, some professional who, uh, is the insurance broker, or former insurance broker for the school district, or the engineering firm, or the solicitor. These are millions of dollars that we're talking about, and it's big money. And they would cut your throat for those positions and to put somebody up there. That's how, that's how nasty it gets, all right? And they had a very nasty, and they still have a nasty person involved in their campaign, this children's first group, all right? So I think, you know, before you put a, a principal in a high school, I did have one person tell me yesterday, a former board member. He said, uh, well, you put somebody in there and then the new superintendent comes in, and if they don't like them, you fire them. And we haven't fired an administrator in the forty years I was here, all right? Not one administrator's ever been fired. They've resigned, walked away, whatever, no one ever got fired, all right? So we're gonna fire them? I don't think so. I think what we need to do is put people on the board of education who don't have all the, this baggage behind them with, uh, the terms of money and who they're, uh, answering to. And they could say they don't, they could say, well, it's children first, nobody's believing it, okay? Based on the history and based on what went on. So I, I, I think we should let the new superintendent, if anything, this person should be a visionary and somebody who's coming in to look at the district, get a feel for it, and put people in place that are part of his philosophy or whatever you wanna call it. That's my own personal opinion. Now, if the community elects to put and to keep this building and to keep the school system as a political whorehouse, well, if they elect to put these children first people in, then it won't matter who the superintendent is. Because let me tell you something, it'll be, what are the five or six or seven votes? And he'll fold like a cheap suit, no matter who he is. So it's important that we put people on the board of education who aren't connected to these professionals, who aren't connected to these political parties, and who are gonna do the right thing. Then your superintendent will be able to do the right thing. Without that, forget it.
Thank you. Sure.
Green, you make some good points. The only thing I'd ask is, with kids in the room, just watch. Thank you.
Uh, Mrs. McShane?
I just wanted to touch on the, um, the HIB and all the different rules or consequences that are being put in place. That I do realize that it's not as popular or, and thank God, that teachers are involved in those, um, in a HIB when it comes to like a student and a teacher. But I am curious if there are, like, set consequences for, like, administration? And if there is, is there somewhere that that's easy to be found? Or is it just each situation is looked at and then determined from there? Because I do realize that once you have a teacher that's been tenured for, um, years, that if there are these circumstances that have come up, which has been a personal experience for our family, it's, where does the consequence lie with a, an employee of our district being terminated or just jockeyed around, um, to help keep our children safe as well? I do realize it's not the, it's not as common as what you guys are seeing when it comes to HIB reports, but it does exist. And, um, I am curious if there is like a foundation of more black and white of, if this were to happen, this is the next step that's taken, opposed to jockeying around staff members until they fully pension out and have an opportunity to retire, opposed to being terminated.
Dr. Ellis, you wanna chime in first?
So there has been incidences in my time here where we have to investigate staff. I will say, I don't know, appropriate or not, I am not a part of the union, I'm not, the allegiance is doing what's right. And that when it's, it's come across my desk, there's an opportunity, just as a code of conduct, there is a code of conduct for educators, and then there's the HIB. And so I have made sure in collaboration with the administration that they were both followed up. They both, um, were able to have both components looked and reviewed, and that that was done with due diligence as any case. The new update for our HIB policy that you will see is now electronic form that anybody can have and input information, whether it be for staff, student, um, who, whatever that may be, from a parent or a teacher. They can then upload that, um, in an easy form, as opposed to downloading a form, printing it out. Now it's electronic, you can input it, and it goes automatically in the system. Now, um, you, staff cannot investigate if they're in the same unionized, um, function. So there is an additional investigation done by someone outside of their unit to do the investigation, so it's not a conflict. So it is a process, it is written, and it's a policy that we do follow.
Is there anywhere that that information is available to the public?
The, uh, it is written in the policy, but I will make sure if, um, you communicate your information, I can email the...
Because I'm looking more for what, um, a consequence would be for like a founded HIB against, uh, an employee versus, you know, against a child.
If we could take that offline, I don't wanna go back and forth.
Yeah, that's more of what I'm looking for.
All right, perfect.
And so, you know, all, our policies are online, if you go to our website, our policies are online.
Okay, so specifically what I'm looking for, you're saying?
Correct, yeah. You, you could find that. And also, before you leave, if I could have your number to follow up on your other requests and...
Yes, um, my number is on one of the cards, but if you want to set...
Oh, very good, oh, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Sure.
What, uh, did you mention your name when you came up?
It's Cheryl McShane. Well, I figured they called me by my name, so.
I just wanted to add, um, for the clarity that you will provide for her, that there is a staff violation for HIB. There are two separate things, and so that that's clear, and as well.
Yes. Is the district based on a particular behavior that you're talking about, um, required to move it in, in, in terms of the serious nature of it? Yes.
So, for instance...
We'll take it offline.
Look, someone will call you, no problem.
All right, so I wanted to come up, um, for part two. Just real quick about surveys, um, because I've done a lot of work, probably twenty-plus years, around surveys. Surveys that have five questions have the highest response rate. So when you're crafting your survey, I'm surprised, I don't know, like I said, if HYI didn't, um, discuss that. Or at least something, certainly it goes in increments of five, and then ten or less has the highest response. So if we're already at fifteen, I can tell you right now, when I'm looking at it, I'm not, I'm going, okay, here we go. Right, so get to the, the question that you want answered, like, that's priority for you, in the first one or two. Because after that, you may lose people. So just a quick, um, I'm sure if Megan Watson's watching, she'd probably be laughing about me talking about surveys again. But in any case, um, I wanna talk about, uh, when I was on the board, we had, um, discussions, this is back in 2016, about job descriptions. And I remember when, um, we were in different committees, we looked at them. And some of them were dated in the nineties, in terms of job descriptions. So this kind of follows along the theme of, you know, various employees doing what they're actually laid out to do. Um, in terms of even evaluations, I'm not sure how they're done, but I could just imagine if you have your job description and then you have what you did, it's just a really easy, this is what I'm supposed to do, and this is what I actually did, right? So I know that when we were looking at them, I was shocked that a lot of them were in the mid-nineties. Um, I'm assuming that they're probably updated, but they, that may not be a bad exercise to give everyone and email them their job description. So you'd be surprised, right, when I get my job description, I'm like, oh, I didn't realize I was in charge of that, right? So it, it's not a bad exercise, I don't know if we currently do it, I'll apologize in advance if we do, and I just don't know. Um, but I would like that question answered, to see in terms of where are we and making sure that those job descriptions are all up to date. So that's my first question. And then also, just in general, um, for postings, I'm not sure exactly who does the postings. I believe that our human resources person who just stepped out, I, it's a small group, I think maybe what's an N of two or three. But in the vacancy for the high school principal and all of these vacancies, and this may be good for the recruitment committee that Connie brought up. When you do a posting, you have, and I have it here, and you guys can all pull it up at your leisure, but you have a set of required criteria. And that's required, meaning that it's not negotiable. But what we have in this posting is we have required criteria, and then we have minimum three years administrative experience, high school level, preferred. Knowledge of experience with scheduling models, process and software desirable. Totally misleading. Is it required, is it preferred or desirable? So those are things that, when public look at these postings, and Jack, you alluded to it, and talking about making sure, like, this is, this is recruitment, I mean, this is the face of the district. So these postings really should read bucketed. This is required, non-negotiable, and then preferred and desirable. So that should be bucketed, because if I'm looking at this, I'm not sure, was it required or is it preferred or desirable? So anyway, this is the active posting that we have right now for the leader of the high school. We might wanna go back and take a look at it and make sure that it's clear that we know what we want is required, preferred or desirable. So just a quick call, I'm not sure who's in charge of it, I just wanna bring it to your attention. And then a follow-up from my question in terms of why the post didn't happen for principal. I just wanna ask Dr. Ellis, because you had mentioned transparency. I just wanna ask, I don't know what that really means in terms of being, you don't have to answer it now. But in terms of being transparent, of what? Because I don't understand that, um, the former principal gave notice. Because I don't understand that the former principal gave notice. To me, that's pretty transparent, that we need a principal. So I'm just not sure where that gap, I still don't understand what transparency would be needed in holding that. So that's just a quick clarification to make sure that I understand. And then, quick comment about crop tops. If we want to hand out T-shirts to students wearing crop tops, we may want to address the five-feet weeds that are in front of the 1112 building first, because I'm going to say that's probably a little bit more pressing. Beyond being disrespectful to wanting to hand out T-shirts to students, I think if we want to have a sense of pride, if that's the way it's being couched, that crop tops aren't prideful, I'm not sure. I'm just going to use it in this regard and say, can we address what the buildings look like? Let's not worry about what the students are wearing. Let's worry about what the building looks like. Let's start there, because you're looking at their appearance, and the outside of the 1112 building, when I entered for open house, was appalling. So I just want to bring that to your attention, that we're looking at the students and saying, you're not dressed appropriately. But I'm looking at the building and say, can we start there and stop looking at the students? Because that's stuff that we can all control. That's the why, right? Why does it look like that? I don't know. So anyway, those are my questions. Do you need them repeated?
No, thank you, Carol. I'll jump in on the transparency piece that I alluded to. I think for me, you know, when I talked about transparency, I think the delay was simply, as a board, we wanted transparency from the administration as to how, because some of those concerns that you raised, as far as recruitment and postings and so forth, that's what we were trying to understand. So that probably, you know, elevated to time where we could actually post, because we were trying to get the information from our peers here and our administrators as to, that's the piece, as far as transparency, that's what I was referring to.
Gotcha.
I don't know if anyone can answer the question regarding the updated job descriptions. I don't know if that's something we do, or if we have, or we should be doing, or maybe it's a process we should be working on.
Well, we did talk about hiring for the principal, that we should look at job descriptions so we know exactly what we're looking for. So, you know, that did come up, even looking at the overall administration across the high school, for who's doing what, who, you know, and just to make sure that we have the right people in place, though we did talk about that.
And when we talked a little bit about that, too, in business, when we talked about the organizational chart, just again, transparency, the board needs to understand exactly what was happening across the entire district. So that was really the transparency that I alluded to. But I think it was consensus among the board to make sure we get that kind of information before we kind of move with next steps, in terms of principal or other positions for that matter.
And not just that, well, this is an ongoing conversation we've been having about, you know, where are we posting, you know, all those things. That's a bigger conversation we've been having for a while. So we're getting there. We're not there yet, but it's an ongoing conversation.
And I think we may progress, put in more comments.
Yeah, I just want to, thank you, Carol. I think bringing out the posting is really important, and when you said that that's the face of the district, that's what, first thing people see, and again, what my colleagues have said, we have an ongoing conversation, and we're not there yet, but there's a lot of things we need to look at. Thanks.
Yeah, Carol, just a, that was one of the first things I had asked about, was recruitment and how the process works, and then just to hear from Grenade, just said it, and Brian had mentioned before, that that was something that they had discussed in the past.
Just a quick clarification, not a back and forth, but I feel like I have a little bit of a past to have one back and forth. So just to make sure the question's answered, we do not have updated job descriptions, or we do have?
Unless they were updated since the equity had met and looked at them, which that was maybe five months ago or so, then I don't believe they've been updated.
Okay.
I just wanted to, but to give context to the ongoing conversation, and in many levels that we're doing this, and the activities of looking at job postings, being critical, and being solution-driven of what does this look like, adding to the larger conversation. The equity plan has been delayed because of transition, but you will see those recommendations from this lens, along with other lenses, for recommendations for job posting, recruitment, because that is something that not only is budding in certain areas, but is definitely blossoming in the Equity Council. So the work is being done, and the fruits of the labor will be coming shortly.
Perfect.
Thank you all.
I have another question, Jack. Maybe it's changed, I've been gone for about eight years, but I thought teachers get job descriptions when they start off the year.
For new hires?
For all staff.
Should be.
Do our staff get their job description from their department heads, their supervisors? Just wondered.
Yeah, I can't speak to that right now, for this year.
Even before they have their evaluation?
Sure.
Do they get that?
Yes. Yeah, they have access to the job descriptions. They have access to job descriptions.
So they have access online, like if I'm a teacher at Herfel for fourth grade, I can pull up my job?
Those are not online, in that regard, no. No. If I could speak, just, could I speak? Yeah, sure. Okay. Before I left, we had put together a group of professionals in the summer, and then I was your policy person, so we had a big project of, noticeable thing, not ensuring your job descriptions, where over a period of a year, and then I had to bring them to closure as your assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction, which is also the policy supervisor of the district. And we ran through this board in excess of over 500 policies. I remember one month it was over 80. With the express purpose of moving things to an updated process, what we did, it was a big project, we got it done. So that heavy lift was done, but I'll hearken what you say here tonight relative to job descriptions, and insert myself in the process relative to what we need to do to bring those up to date, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. And not to mention, I guess the conversation Connie's going to have with Ari, and kind of bring that back to the board, as to what we can do as a board as well. So I think that'll be important. Thank you. Mary Ben?
I just, a couple of things I wanted to touch on. And one I'm going to start with, I'm glad we're not in sales, but we are in sales, we're teaching our children, right? That's what we're doing. And I just am surprised as to how long it takes to put job descriptions, how many months it's been sitting on someone's desk or being reviewed. These things should just be tweaked here and there. I mean, basically the same jobs, year after year, and maybe a few things need to be tweaked, but the holding up of hiring people, when education is the most important thing, just doesn't make sense to me. But I guess that's not for me to understand. But one thing, people have been reaching out to me, and so I told them that I would come up and talk to you. So one, I will piggyback on the special needs. I don't know if that falls under Dr. Alexander's with the busing and understanding, if that happened last year, and these children who were special needs had programs to go to, and then all of a sudden the busing stopped. How is that fair? That is not fair, and I'm not sure how, I mean, you were here, right? So something should have been done, and this year it should have been sorted out. So I don't know why we're already into September, it's almost going to be October, and these children are stripped of a program, and parents are having to take them there and bring them back. I would think that should fall under the school. So I did read that, and I did tell somebody I would come up and talk about that. Negotiations. I remember Connie, before she was a board member, she would come here and talk about it all the time. Sometimes I didn't quite understand it. I don't know that I even understand it now. I knew there's different levels and different people who get contracts and go through all these negotiations, but it was pointed out on social media that there were negotiations, they've been going on since August of 2021, for the support staff, and I don't believe anything's ever been done. You can correct me if I'm wrong. But this has been going on for a long time, that they're not getting anything settled. They're the lowest paid in our whole school system, and they work their heinies off. And they're not just, we have children that go to work at Target and Walmart, and every place else, McDonald's, and make the same amount or more. So it's really a sin that we have parents that are either getting back into the workforce, or maybe their children are in school, or maybe they're retired, and they're going back in and doing this, and getting nothing for it. And then my understanding that they're, I don't know, they're not union or something, and you guys all, I understand it's negotiations, and I don't quite get it all, but then they got an increase in salary, and they're at a higher level. And then these support staff see that, and then at the raises they got, it's just a slap in their face. And so I said I would come out here and talk on their behalf, because it's not right, and you guys should be there to support them, as well as the people at the higher levels. I mean, maybe you get more out of them, I don't know, maybe there's something, but it just doesn't make sense to me. So that being said, I would, since August, I think it was of 2021, maybe you can tell me if that's not correct, something should be done. And then as far as the super search, I did have somebody reach out to me and suggested that with the whole support staff, if you're looking into asking administrators, and you're asking teachers for their opinions, don't ask them to come to you, maybe reach out to those departments and ask them what they're looking for, just give a few questions. I mean, I know it's open to the public, I know it's open to the parents, but they work for you, you know? And show them some consideration, because they know what's going on, and they see it firsthand. And from what I'm understanding, there's a lot of frustration. So just, I would like to see our school get back to teaching and all of this, but it's just, when you see some of these things from people, it's a little disconcerting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Talk about that. I know that we were discussing not only doing the whole public thing, but subcommittees, and that was one of the ones that we had discussed about the support staff also getting input, just so you know that.
Yeah, they're one of the identified subgroups, so absolutely.
Right. And we have discussed, you know, they're still in negotiations, but we also discussed that what they are getting paid is a problem.
Yes, that's a big conversation. We're trying to make...
And we'll leave it at that. Go ahead and go to Ari.
I do believe, I'm just pulling up my email, just so. I just started here, obviously, but I have jumped into the process, just to make the point, you know, the negotiations process is sacred. I would yell at any board member that starts giving information as to what's going on at the negotiations table. I haven't been at the table yet with them, but I will be soon. But I understand it's frustrating, but they just legally cannot give that information. But there was a contract from July 1, 2021, to June 30, 2022, so I don't think it's accurate to indicate that this has been going on since August of 2021. They're currently negotiating, you know, the contract that, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, that's accurate, right?
That just expired.
That just expired. So it's not over a year old, but they're working on it right now. So I'll just leave it at that for now.
Thank you. Tom Baldafaro?
Just one comma first. I know, I've been hearing from some people at home, especially with Dr. Gregor speaking, they can't hear him. I know Dr. Alexander has a microphone, just you might want to pass it when, you know, he's not, I'm not asking him a question now, I'm just saying, I've heard from people that say they can't hear when administration is speaking. Yeah, I heard that earlier, too, so, but. So I'm going to try one more time to express the importance of what I talked about earlier. A while back, a couple of months ago, when I was here, I spoke about culture, and how difficult it is in an organization, a district this size, how hard it is to build a culture. It's very hard, because you're so, you have so many different schools. But it is very easy to harm one. And that starts at the top, and that's what I've talked about, is what I talked about earlier. And the only way to fix it is to speak. I'm not saying what you have to say. Tell me what I'm asking is crazy. So I'm going to stick to one point. The point I made about the super search, and about internal candidates, and the harm that you do, not just to them, but to the people under them, when they see what I call complete disrespect for our people. When you sit here and don't respond to it, tell me I'm stupid. Tell me, Tom, that is a crazy question, it's baseless, you're wrong. Say that. I don't think I am. I've been a leader for a long time, and I know the impact that if I make the wrong decision, or if I do something wrong, and don't explain myself, and don't talk about it, don't be transparent, I lose trust from everyone. So if I can't impress upon you enough how important, you either have to dispute what I say, because I will tell you, every time I bring it up, and every time you don't answer, the district is harmed. So either I'm wrong, or you're wrong. So if I'm wrong, tell me. But I don't think I am. I think it is incredibly harmful what happened to the leadership of this district, and if you did speak to them, say that, so I know to stop bringing it up. But you have to respect the people. You've got to respect the district, they're listening, the teachers are listening. And if they see you ignoring it, and they don't know what's going on, you're not going to build that trust. And so I will tell you again, or ask you again, please, respond. Don't ignore my question. It's a very legitimate question. But if you don't think it is, tell me I'm off-base, so that everybody knows where everybody stands. Thank you.
You can nod your head yes or no, if I get the question right, because we can't go back. But I think you're saying, has anybody spoken to the internal candidates that may have applied for the superintendent search? But I don't know the answer to that.
HYA, HYA did. The consulting group did.
The people who harmed, the people who supported somebody, I'm talking to the people that have been here all year, that's who I addressed earlier.
Yeah. I know. HYA talked to all the applicants. Did you want to say something, Gren? Did you want to say something, Mike?
Are you talking about the past president who was pushing for superintendent? Is that what you're saying?
And the negative impact it can have on the district, when you're kind of trying to push somebody in, and nobody held her accountable up there.
I know that because she was pushing, we all said, slow down, that you're moving too fast, and that's where we took a second look at it, that's also why we also talked about hiring the HYA.
You should have said goodbye.
Excuse me?
You should have said goodbye to her, not slow down.
It's not backward, then you can.
We're not going to go back and forth, we're not going to do that. All right, can I get a motion to close the public?
Still moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Could I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Still moved.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned. See you guys next week.